We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for April the 15th, 2025. The city council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole from April the first. Are there any additions to corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Board of Education, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins June 1, 2025 and ends May 31, 2030.
One moment. Sir, gentlemen, could you all please, we're trying to conduct a meeting here. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Incumbent Melanie Chambliss has served one partial term and two full terms. I would like to nominate Brad Chinowith.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Brad Chinowith. Any discussion or comments?
I would like to say that based on his deep resume and his experience with school board issues and many such issues that involve municipalities and school systems, that we would be very fortunate to have a candidate like, we are fortunate to have a candidate like that. In fact, the whole slate was remarkably talented and I just think this, Mr. Chinowith would be a great asset based on all that he brings to the table and I heartily second and third his nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and anyone else. Anything to add?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Moore. We had a great slate of candidates. It was a very tough decision to make between all these folks that interviewed, had a great, great interviews and just appreciative of all the folks that did come out and interview and apply to be a part of this and just very, very thankful to have the quality of candidates that we have. And I think Mr. Chinowith will be a great, great asset on the Board of Education. Excuse my voice tonight. I'm sorry. A little hoarse.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of Brad Chinowith for Auburn City School Boards, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, and one no. And that carries forward. We'll confirm that later on the agenda. I do want to echo what you have heard earlier. We had 12 outstanding applicants. Six of those applicants participated in interviews and I'm certainly grateful that our citizens sought to serve their community through the school board and encourage those who were not selected tonight to continue to look for your avenues to serve Auburn and make this a better place. And we do look forward to working with Mr. Chinowith. And I want to thank Melanie Chambliss for her terms and service to the Auburn City School Board. She's done an outstanding job and she's finishing up as Chair of the Board. So thank you, Melanie, for all your hard work. Ms. Conley, would you like to say something?
Yes. I also thought that all the candidates was really, really good and they did an outstanding job as far as interviewing. And I just want to say that my preferred candidate, in my mind, I sort of kind of like had a choice between Connie Pace and Dr. April. But unfortunately, maybe they can try again. And so I just want to thank everybody who did take the time out to come out and interview. And like I said, all the candidates did a wonderful job. So I appreciate the time that they took in order for us council members to select a candidate for the position.
All right, we'll move forward for Historic Preservation Commission. This is the responsibility of the mayor to make these nominations. We have two incumbents and I'd like to renominate Goran Bird, who has served one full term for a second full term.
Second.
All right, have a motion second. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor of Goran Bird for second full term, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries forth. And the second nomination I have tonight is also for an incumbent who has served one partial term and one full term. I'd like to nominate Maven Beard for a second full term.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor of Maven Beard, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm those later on in the agenda. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager. I know she has something for us. Are there any questions from the dials? Okay, Ms. Crouch?
Mayor, item 8B4 has been removed from the agenda. That's a real estate purchase agreement for a North College Street easement. It's been removed on the advice of legal counsel. I'll remind you again when we get to the consent agenda during the regular meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we will move to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned the committee of the whole and I will open tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for April the 15th, 2025. We welcome all of those who have joined us live here in the council chambers as well as those that are listening on WA&amp;I or that are watching through our streaming services. Roll call?
Adams?
Here.
Obelens?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Andrews?
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, city council appointed Brad Chinowith to the Auburn Board of Education and the city council also reappointed Goran Bird and Maven Beard to the Historic Preservation Commission. The city manager has informed us that item 8B4 has been removed from tonight's agenda. As far as mayor's announcements, I do have a number of announcements. It is a busy time of year in our community, so please bear with me. Tomorrow, Lee County Youth Development will be having a ceremony to recognize Child Abuse Awareness Month. I applaud the great work of the Lee County Youth Development and their outstanding staff. And this is a time where they take, they take the time to fully recognize the trials and tribulations of some of our children and those that they are serving out there who end up in Lee County Youth Development as really a place of last resort. And thank goodness, they've got a great staff that love on them and give them a chance to have hope again for their lives. Also, this Friday is Cops on Top and if you need some groceries on Friday, we encourage you to stop by Kroger and contribute to Special Olympics. Our police officers will be involved in that. It's a great way to get a cheap lunch of a hot dog and chips and a drink for $5. But this is a great effort to recognize those citizens in our community that have special needs and their families and this opportunity for them to participate in the Special Olympics. Next week, we'll also be filming a segment for our next council meeting with our Teachers of the Year and we'll recognize our outstanding teachers in Auburn City Schools and all of our schools. And this is just time to say thank you to them for their outstanding efforts as they invest in our children. The Auburn Beautification Council will be replanning the hanging baskets in downtown. And if you see some hardy workers out there that are climbing on top of ladders and probably don't need to be, I hope you'll take time to say thank you. They pour their heart and soul into that effort. Those hanging baskets, I believe, make a difference in our downtown and they'll be working on that and changing those to spring flowers in the very near future. City Fest is a week from Saturday and what a humongous effort that is with our staff and so many people in our city and our volunteers out at Kiesel Park. And we pray now for great weather and a great day and we encourage you to take your family out there and enjoy that. I want to thank our Chamber of Commerce, who will be hosting a reception next week for our industries as we tell them thank you for the jobs that they create in our community. And I appreciate Ann and her staff taking the time to invest in these industries as we all should say thank you for the jobs that they create for Auburn that benefits all of us. I want to remind our community that the National Day of Prayer is May the 1st and there's a citizen or ceremony that all of us can participate in and go to at Courthouse Square in Opalika at lunch. If you don't have anything to do that day, please come over there and join a multitude of pastors and different members of our community as we pray to God for our community. Also want to say that the, remind everybody that Storybook Farms Derby Day is coming up soon before we have our next meeting. And this is, what a great organization Storybook Farms is, is they also serve those families with special needs in our community. And the Derby Party is really, really fun as well. So anyway, that's the first Saturday in May. And then tomorrow night, myself and President Chris Roberts from Auburn University will be traveling to Montgomery to participate in the Committee of 100, where he and I will be talking about the great things that go on in our community and how our town and our gown work together to make Auburn a better and special place. And I look forward to that time. And then finally, I just want to say happy Easter to all of you in our community. For me, that is the most important day of the year and hope all of you with your family have a great Easter and safe travels. Does anyone else have an announcement they'd like to make? Okay, I know that was a mouthful. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. I'd like to thank the staff and the citizens who took part in the Love My Block effort to beautify Ward 5. A lot of the people I see in this room were out there on the curb handing out things and I thank you for that. I've got some flower seeds I need to plant soon. And I'd also like to bring to your attention that on 1 May, the library is going to host a Star Wars Imperial Gala. So if we have any Star Wars fans in here, I would love to see you dress up. And there will be a music crafts and a costume contest. So I wish you the best of luck and I look forward to seeing your costumes.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack McMurray. I'm the Assistant Vice President of External Affairs with Auburn SGA and tonight I'm here to report on what's happening at campus. Yesterday, the SGA Senate officially confirmed all of our directors and assistant directors, so we're really excited to get our goals working to serve the student body. Recently, the Board of Trustees approved a nice expansion to our Edge Dining for a frictionless convenience store, which means it'll be entirely operated by AI cameras and weight sensors to help with student shopping because of the congestion on the center of campus. Tonight, the Panathinaic Council is hosting their yearly Greek scene competition to benefit Habitat for Humanity. Leading up to the event, chapter members were participating in onsite activities around Auburn Opalika area. And last year, they raised over $196,000 and I really hope that they can beat that again this year. Finally, Auburn baseball completed a home sweep over LSU for the first time in, I think, four decades. The golf team had a third place finish at their, end of their regular season tournament in Savannah. And Auburn A-Day was a promising look at our upcoming season and I think everybody around here is very excited for it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
We are certainly grateful for the Panathinaic. What they do for Habitat is just phenomenal. Each year, they basically pay for a new house for a family and sometimes two. And they're having fun tonight and raising money for a great cause. And we're grateful for our students and the way they, so many of them invest in our community and thankful for how they support that organization. All right, at this time, it's Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is only a time to talk about items that are on tonight's agenda. I would ask if your item that you'd like to talk about does have a public hearing that you wait until that public hearing to address the city council. But if there's anything else in our agenda you'd like to address, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak to the city council. I see some folks looking, looking around wondering, are you, just if it doesn't have a public hearing attached to it? There's one that has a public hearing. The last ordinance, item 9C, does have a public hearing. Yes, ma'am. Okay, understand. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with city manager communications.
Mayor, you already covered this, but under city manager's communications this evening, we want to remind everybody for the last time that item 8B4 has been removed from the agenda on the advice of legal counsel. I'd also like to announce one vacancy on the Board of Zoning Adjustment for an unexpired term that begins upon appointment and ends January 20th, 2026. You'll be making that appointment in May.
Thank you.
Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Point of clarification, does 8B4 need to be removed?
8B4 has been already removed from the agenda as if it doesn't exist.
Okay, I'll motion for consideration of the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I'd like to remove 8 Bravo 2, please.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. All right, 8B2, we're going to remove 8B2.
All right, item 8B2 authorizes the purchase of 1,248 rollout garbage cans from Toder LLC in the amount of $73,776.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have some questions about this. First off, I want to say our environmental services are fantastic. That's one of the high points of the city. Y'all do such a wonderful job. 1,248 additional carts. I know some of them are replacements. What's the lifespan of these things? And how often do we have to replace them? And where do we stand in terms of how many are damaged and how many are new and that kind of thing?
We have currently about 120 carts, new carts. So when someone purchases a new house, they get a new cart.
Right.
If someone already has an existing house and have had a new cart, they get a used cart that's lightly used, one that we have repaired that is still good, numbers are legible. Carts last from 17 to 20 years and our warranty on it includes the lid, the wheels, and the axle.
So Katrina, on a frequent basis, though, you collect them based on citizens' complaints or concerns from your employees, repair them. Some are beyond repair and once in a while, one of our trucks unintentionally destroys one due to a malfunction.
That is correct. Due to a malfunction, anytime you use assisted side loading equipment, every, I want to say 25,000 or so, we may hit a glitch in which one slips off into the hopper and we can't retrieve it.
So of the 1,248 this time, roughly what percentage would be for, to replace damaged carts or what?
Majority of them are damaged. Each month, we're dealing with about 55 new houses. So every month, 55 new houses, but this will last us until the new fiscal year.
And what would you say about the warranty again?
17 to 20 years.
The warranty or the lifespan?
The lifespan of the cart, the warranty as well. The warranty is on the plastic only.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And again, y'all do a great job. You replaced one of mine recently, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments related to 8B2? Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? So moved. Have a motion second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda carries forth. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, bear with me. We have three similar agenda items in a row, but I've got to take you through the paces with all of them. Item 9A1 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for city taxes, the five mills for general purposes, for the general fund, and five mills for capital projects debt repayment known as the special five-mill tax. Council must annually renew the property taxes to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. To be very clear, this is a renewal of existing taxes. These are not new taxes or tax increases. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing none, any questions? Okay, Lindsay with the roll call.
Obelens?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Item 9A2 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for school taxes, 11 mills for educational purposes, also known as a special school tax fund. Council must annually renew the property taxes to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. This is a renewal of existing taxes. These are not new taxes or tax increases. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Hearing none, any comments or questions?
Just to be clear, this is 9A3. We've already moved beyond the other one. And this one is for school tax.
We're on 92.
This 9A2.
We're still on two. Are we on the 11?
Yes, on the 11 mills.
Yep.
But that, of course, is not a school tax and it's the largest one that we'll discuss tonight. And it's 1.1 cents per dollar of property.
It is a school tax.
It is a school tax.
I'm sorry. Special school tax fund, my bad. But it's the largest one and it only represents a penny, 1.1 cents property tax received by Auburn. That's what 11 mills means.
Anyone else? All right, Lindsay with the roll call.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Obelens?
Yes, ma'am.
Andrews?
Yes.
Last one. Item 9A3 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for school taxes, a separate tax of five mills for educational purposes, also known as a special school tax fund. The city council must annually renew this property tax to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. This is a renewal of an existing tax. It's not new tax and it's not a tax increase. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Hearing none, any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay with the roll call.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Obelens?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Andrews?
Yes.
Item 9B is a request from Mitchell Triple D Farm LLC to annex approximately 210.88 acres of property located on Lee Road 146, also known as Moores Mill Road, approximately a half mile east of Society Hill Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its March 20th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Any comments or questions?
To clarify, this is within the optimal boundaries?
It is on the edge of the optimal boundary, but it is in. One parcel further down Lee Road 146 would be out.
And it is also designated as a low priority for annexation?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct. So we're in the, we're in the process of updating the annexation priorities. And one of the shifting opinions internally has just been from the original annexation priorities, they're much more representative of if a property is really viable for development. And I think at the time that this, at the time of the current annexation priorities being set, this was really at the far fringes of the city and I guess it still is at the far fringes of the city. But it never was really contemplated for development and that has to do for a lot of reasons, just from utilities never making it out there, but also just from a scope of development not really being suitable for the Lake Ogle Tree watershed. And I think kind of what the shift has been internally and I think the new update around the annexation priorities will reflect is contemplating bringing the bounds of Lake Ogle Tree watershed into the city limits for the other benefits of having the watershed in the city limits. So that, that just speaks to why there was support from this, from the planning commission level and from the staff level.
Thank you.
And this will come in not as rural, but rural with a conservation overlay?
We'll go ahead and the planning director explain that.
Yes, and so as is mentioned, just kind of in the zoning ordinance, when the Conservation Overlay District was established, there were two separate, staff reports, two separate ordinances that happened. There was the initial one that established the overlay district that can be applied throughout the city, just kind of someone requested. But then there is the, but then there's a carve out for the Lake Ogle Tree watershed. And there was a separate ordinance that rezoned all of the property that was already in the city that was within the Lake Ogle Tree watershed into the Conservation Overlay District. And that set the precedent that if something were to be annexed into the city that was within the Lake Ogle Tree watershed, it automatically received the designation of the Conservation Overlay District.
So just coming automatic with the rural because of that ordinance? And the whole intent, you know, and there's a storied history of the watershed that precedes the Conservation Overlay District, particularly with regard to a dairy farm and many other things that were in our watershed. The city's been intentional in my near 30-year career and prior to my arrival here to protect the watershed and our waters, you know, things that are going into Lake Ogle Tree. So they cannot get any greater density than with the Conservation Overlay, but they can have lot sizes as small as one and a half acres, but they can't build any more units whether it's in or it's out. So it just will allow them to cluster units and to leave more open space in certain areas, which is better for the watershed.
That's correct.
So in this case, when we have one and a half acre lots, it's not, it's not, it's not an acre and a half for the whole place. And I just thought people might want to be aware of that. If they see an acre and a half lot out there, it doesn't mean that there'll be more density, as you said, on the, on this property.
Correct. And there's a variety of sizes also.
Yes, yes. And so, yeah, so you can go down to an acre and a half. It gives you that flexibility. But also with the Conservation Overlay District, they're really swapping out the, as the large lots for a lot more scrutiny. They have to submit a concept plan. There has to be a site walk with Water Resource Management. And there also is substantial discussion internally about the configuration of the lots, configuration of the road network, how they are going to log the site. A lot of the things that have to do with getting approval from the Conservation Overlay District. There is a lot of upfront scrutiny that most subdivision plats are not subjected to. And that's just, that just goes with the Conservation Overlay District. So even though they are getting what looks to be smaller lot sizes, they're really trading it for a lot more scrutiny to ensure that conservation is a priority for the subdivision.
Thank you.
Megan, does the future roundabout at Society Hill and Moores Mill impact their development plan?
We had an existing development agreement with the initial phase of this. I'll have our executive director of Development Services, Scott Cummings, address that.
So initially, there was some concern about the additional traffic there. The, the plan for the roundabout is Side Hill Road and Moores Mill that had already been anticipated and the city had already committed, you know, the funds for that, which the council approved and authorized here a few weeks ago. So in essence, that, that has already been anticipated and is planned. So there is a development agreement at this time for, which would include these lots of, that they can't build more than 10 lots in a year. So by the time of the delay of the project itself, then that's, that's probably really not even going to be necessary because the roundabout should be built.
So ultimately, the 10 lots per year was predicated on the roundabout not being finished. Once it's finished, that changes their ability to...
That is correct.
Was there, there was a timing piece in there too? The roundabout or the end of fiscal year, county year '26 or something?
Correct. And that was the anticipated time of getting the roundabout built.
Thank you.
Yes, Kelly?
Okay, thank you. So it says we've got 48 single-family lots and 16 conventional family lots. So we're talking about potential of 64 new, new homes. Is that correct?
I guess there's, there isn't a plat associated with this, but, but I guess there, there's a subsequent plat that's kind of working its way through that hasn't been submitted for review yet to the, to the city. So I can't.
That's just what's in the...
talking about potential of 64 new homes. Is that correct?
I guess there's, there isn't a plat associated with this, but I guess there's, there's a subsequent plat that's kind of working its way through that hasn't been submitted for review yet to the, to the city, so I can't.
That's just what's in the...
Yeah, so, so there is, there is an existing phase one that's south of this. There's also what could be built on it currently, but I, I know there's a lot of work, just kind of, because it's a, it's a much bigger project than, than that, so.
Okay, so it says the expected proposed preliminary plat shows 16 conventional and 48 families. So, all right, so, potential of 64.
Correct.
Unless they change something down the road.
Yes.
Okay, and there's, because it's in the conservation overlay, it's going to have more scrutiny, we're not doing three-acre lots like we normally would do in a rural annexation?
Correct, and so, and so they, they can do three-acre lots, they can do more than that, but they, but what conservation allows them to do is that they can cluster the development down to 1.5 acres, and then that would allow them to have more land, and that would be in a conservation easement in perpetuity that can never be developed. Instead of having that within the boundary of people's lot lines, that would then be subject to people's private decisions if they wanted to, not fill the floodplain, they can do that, but they wanted to cut down trees or et cetera, they'd be able to do that because it's on their property. By clustering the development, it leaves land that would then have to be either, like I said, dedicated to the city or has to be put in a conservation easement in perpetuity.
But we're going to be clear, this is not going to be dedicated to the city at this time. Okay.
That's just, that's just an option in the, that's just an option in the ordinance. But, yeah.
Okay, and would you not provide water? Who provides their water?
Eric.
That would be Borghardt Water Authority.
And there's also no sewage available in the area, so we're looking at 64 septic systems within the watershed?
Correct. That's right.
Is that a good idea? I mean...
Well, there's really no way around it that I can see from our standpoint, but three-acre lots is plenty big enough.
So, if it's averaging over the whole property, it's what he's saying, it's ultimately...
That's right.
Fine.
Yeah.
And from a regulatory standpoint, the city doesn't have a legal basis to not allow it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Mormon.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Friswall.
No ma'am.
Sanders.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item 9C is a request from Brandon Hayes to rezone approximately 1.11 acres of property located at 615 South College Street from Neighborhood Conservation 20 to Neighborhood Conservation 14. The Planning Commission failed to recommend approval of this request by a vote of three to five at its March 20th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have motion second. Seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing here none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council regarding this, please come forward, and we'll ask that you give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the city council.
Good evening.
My name's Vienna Louise Katynen, and my husband and I have lived at 550 South Gay Street for 41 years. And before I address the issue at hand, I'd like to express my appreciation to the council members for the work and dedication that they do, because it's time, it's effort for the greater good, and I really do appreciate that. Now, I'm attending this council meeting to state my opposition to Brandon Hayes' request for a zoning change at 615 South College Street from NC 20 to NC 14. This developer's plan is to create a small development of five houses, three on 615 South College, plus two more on the lot just north of that piece of property. It's important that the planning commission, it's important to note that the planning commission, as stated, has not approved Mr. Hayes' request. I would urge the city council to accept the planning commission's decision because it's right for Auburn. Neighborhood voices must be heard and listened to. We do not want, as in their advertising, giant white houses in the neighborhood. We don't want giant white houses on a floodplain. We don't want giant white houses on relatively small lots next to bungalows and ranch-style homes that have the same size lot but have lots of wooded area. We don't want the decimation of large mature trees. We don't want so much concrete on the ground that it endangers the proper flow of water into the creeks. Tinkering with nature's defenses will bring more problems down the road to Auburn. We've already considered, we've already suffered considerable distress with noise pollution connected with recent building. We can't sit outdoors without hearing loud and constant noise of heavy machinery. So, please accept the planning commission's decision. Please do not override their decision. Thank you for your attention and for your service to Auburn, and happy Easter and happy Passover. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
My name is Corey Reynolds. I reside at 733 South College Street. I'm here representing the Talon Homeowners Association, or otherwise known as the Giant White Houses on South College Street. Sorry. I do believe that there was some opposition, obviously, to our development that came in on South College, and I recognize that fully. However, I do feel that our neighborhood, our little cul-de-sac, did enhance kind of the beauty and preserve the density of the home sites along South College. For reference, we have six home sites that sit on 5.2 acres of land on South College. That is in contrast to this development, looking at putting three homes on 1.11 acres and additional two lots on about a .9 acre lot. So, there's some discrepancy and just differences between our development and this other development that's being looked at. On average, the homes on South College probably average between a half acre to an acre for each home site. So, again, a departure of putting so many lots or so many home sites on such small density is, is a departure from the appearance down South College Street. There's talk about adjacent zoning at the planning commission meeting, being that there is NC 14 adjacent to this lot, and that's why they're seeking that. That adjacent lot is on the backside of this lot, that not only north of college but on the backside. That backside is Meadowbrook, and so Meadowbrook is a private or small street off of Gay Street. And so, the only people who drive down Meadowbrook are the people who live on Meadowbrook. It's not a main thoroughfare such as South College. So, density does matter on South College Street. As the name of this development implies, it's, it's, I believe, let's see, I want to make sure I say it right, the Spring Creek Estates. There is a creek that runs right through the property. It is at the low point of the hill. If you're driving down South College, it's at the very low point of the hill. Water comes from the arboretum and is piped underneath South College Street, flows through these two properties in the floodplain. All the water runs down South College from the north side, the south side, and all dumps there. So, there's a lot of water to be managed there. The removal of most of the current vegetation that's in that area in order to develop that lot is going to remove what draws much of that water. It will affect people down the creek. So, just removing all that vegetation, the water will flow, more water will flow through there and not be soaked up by the trees and other vegetation that's there. Recently, there was another lot on South College Street that was for sale. Developers were looking to subdivide that property. It was just, I guess, north of the Performing Arts Center. I know several developers that were talking about how to subdivide that lot, put two homes there where there was one little ranch. The university did step in and buy that property. I don't know what their plans are for development, but it did cease any subdivision of that lot. So, I don't know if the university has, you know, what they want to do with that lot, but they certainly didn't want it subdivided at this point. There will be future development requests along South College. There are many older homes, there'll be another generation of homeowners, and opening the door to rezoning just opens the door for future requests for rezoning. And I really think this, the city should really look at preserving at a minimum half-acre lots along South College. It's the main thoroughfare for visitors and people coming to Auburn, come right down South College Street, and we really want to preserve the beauty of that space. And so, that's kind of my thoughts to just share with you all, our concerns from our neighborhood in, in South College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Hi, my name's Charlie McCurry, and I'm from 802 South Gay Street. Good evening. A lot of what everyone else has said is a lot of what I wanted to say, too, but yes, the rezoning on 615 South College Street, and I urge the council to vote against this rezoning because of the irreversible damage it will cause to the nature and wildlife in the area. We've already seen developments in the area which have led to wildlife getting pushed closer to the roads and closer to the streets, and their homes being pushed out. In my home, I spent a lot of the time back there in the creek and looking around, and I've noticed that the, there are more fallen trees because of the, because the ground gets impervious when there's a lot of asphalt or concrete or buildings, and so that's going to increase runoff into the creek. And so, we're already seeing that. Not only that, but I'm also seeing a buildup of trash and just overall construction materials that I've seen that have been gotten into the creek due to this increase in runoff. And on top of that, there's sound pollution and light pollution have been increased in my backyard, and I'm sure the backyard to many others. Now, instead of going out at night and you can see all the stars and you can listen to the sounds of nature, it's now you can hear the background of College Street and you can see the lights of the highway as the cars drive by. And I really think that takes away a lot of Auburn, and it's how it balances being a town and also being, having this wonderful bit of nature within it. So, I think that in the worries of preserving the creek and the wildlife around, I think it would be best if the council voted against this and any future things that could perfect, protect the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Good evening. I'm Paul Schrems. I live at 563 South College Street. My wife and I resided there for over 23 years. I'd like to first remind you, and I'm glad that it was brought up, that the planning commission did not, they denied this development plan. Well, some of the reasons, and we have a planning commission for a reason. The planning commission is supposed to approve developments that come up. They're supposed, they have the authority to look at them, and then they either approve or deny them. And when they consider all of the indicators of this development, they decided that they were going to deny it. And there are some of the legitimate concerns that they had, and a lot of them had to do with compliance with water quality and safety. 50% of this area they would like to divide is in the floodplain. There's a perennial stream that runs through the development. The development's going to require a waiver of a water resource plan to get approval for management of the stream-side management zone, plus for the stream-side zone to be managed forever because you have to maintain the banks of the stream as it runs through the development. They also talked about having to do wetlands mitigation. And what that means is, in their development, they're going to destroy part of the wetlands that are adjacent to this stream. And in order for them to be able to do that, they have to buy on a two-to-one, two acres to one acre indication, they have to go out somewhere else and remediate wetlands that will be in wetlands in perpetuity for whatever wetlands they destroy on the development of this process. My question is, how close is this wetland remediation going to be to South College Street? Is it going to be way off up here in the conservation district we're just talking about? We don't know. All right, I do have several questions. Well, one more comment. One of the other things they talked about is, they're talking about putting three houses on this 1.1 acre. So, they're going to divide this up into three lots, put three houses on it, and those three houses, plus an existing lot, are going to all use a common driveway. My question is, how many developments in Auburn have four houses using a common driveway? I'm talking about single-family houses in neighborhood conservation districts. There probably are none. Can you imagine four houses trying to come out at one driveway between 7:30 and 8:15 in the morning with everybody trying to go to work and trying to get back into that same driveway at 4:45 to 5:15 when y'all come home from work? So, we, those are things we need to consider. Most else, what I had has already been covered, so I won't cover those again. But in closing, I'd like to make this comment. In this development, the proposal's going to require variances and exceptions, both in water resource plan and in safety plans with multiple houses on one driveway. My question is, why open the city up to harmful unintended water resource, traffic congestion consequences, all to just approve a developer's desire to create extra lots close to the city? Just because you can make this change technically doesn't mean that it's a good idea. If you look at the city's COP 2030 plan, it stresses the importance of South College Street as being a gateway into the city. Do we want to come on South College Street, two blocks from campus, and have five houses located on less than two acres of land with four of them sharing one driveway? I would suggest and recommend that city council turn this proposal down. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Good evening, council. My name's Hayes Eifert. I'm with Sanford Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have, or I can answer concerns that were raised here today, whatever order is most competent.
Okay. Once we get through the public hearing, if the council has any questions, I'll ask you to come back.
Mayor, but I would caution, if you have any information, you, you don't get an opportunity in city council meetings to, Greg, stop the clock real quick here, to offer information outside of the public hearing. So, if there's something you feel like the council needs to know, they will ask you questions once the public hearing closes, but I strongly suggest if you feel like you want to say something, you say it now. You've got about four and a half minutes to do so.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Crouch. So, primarily, there's a couple of things here that I just wanted to clear up regarding the floodplain and stream issues that were brought up by several citizens. In that regard, the city has mechanisms in place to protect these things, and we will have to go through those processes, no matter what the fact with this development, to abide by city manual requirements. We will work with city staff to do so. The developer has no intent of coming in and mitigating any wetlands or streams on this property. We've already had extensive conversations about the floodplain and how that's going to be addressed on this site, just due to the nature of how it sits in its existing condition with that floodplain. The lot also has an odd shape due to where that stream hits. And so, a lot of this rezoning will allow us to maintain a density that is very consistent with NC 14, NC 20 area. But due to the odd nature of how we are having to shape these lots around the natural features to maintain that stream, this rezoning would really aid in developing the property in that way. Another thing here is, by right, we believe that we can fit four lots currently. This would get it to five lots. That would also, that would drive down massive white houses, if you will, down to a more, they'll still be large houses, but they'll be more consistent with what's, with what is typical in NC 20 or NC 14 in that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let you know if we have any questions. Who'll be next? Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to have Water Resource Management address the various floodplain and creek concerns.
Okay, what, what we can do is, when, when you're talking about, there's aspects that are under the jurisdiction of the Water Resource Management Department, and sometimes they're under state or federal jurisdictions, so Eric can... jurisdictions, so Eric can clarify, and Scott in or Brandy may weigh in based on what we've seen to date in plans. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, there'll probably be something like a 25-foot streamside buffer and a 10-foot upland buffer, something like that, or maybe more. I know there's wetlands on site, but without seeing a plan or mitigation plan or something like that, we really can't comment on what we're looking at right now or what we might accept. There are some challenges there, as mentioned, but without a plan, it's just, we're going to have to wait and see.
And I'll remind you that you're not considering a site plan this evening, conditional use approval, a subdivision. You're purely considering a rezoning.
Res zoning.
So questions are appropriate for your information. I just want to remind you that one of our challenges on the staff side is without a site plan, to Eric's point. But I can assure you that anything wetlands, floodplain, stream buffer related, we have very stringent regulations as the state and federal government do, and as the project representative said, they'll have to comply, whether it's rezoned or not. If they do four houses, they'll have to meet all that criteria.
When a developer or property owner has to mitigate wetlands or floodplains, those credits, do we decide where those credits are used or banked?
No, you, you're buying credits from a wetland bank or a stream bank. On the floodplain side is a different situation, how that's handled, but you buy them from a stream bank, the city has to buy them at times as well to deal with bridge projects is one of our most frequent. And so you're buying them typically from a bank, the nearest bank you can, that has available credits in a region. The only time you get to designate is once in a while the city or another entity will create their own bank for their own purposes. But yeah, we don't get to designate, and I don't believe we have the legal authority to demand which bank somebody goes to because those credits aren't issued through the city. They come based on other regulatory authorities.
Megan, the applicant's representative said that by right, they could build four houses. Could you confirm that?
So I have our planning director speak to him, and I want to remind everybody, because we haven't seen full plans, they have to, why theoretically, on the NC-14 that exists today and the NC-20 that exists today, that could happen. You have to meet all of our subdivision regulations and all the requirements of Water Resource Management Engineering. The driveway is yet to be discussed, correct?
In theory.
Correct. But you've got to meet a lot of regulations that they may be, may be working on, but we don't have that information at this time. But in theory, they fit and meet criteria, you know, in a rough look at it, justice.
Yeah. So combined, kind of like they were getting at, the lot 615 is already big enough that they could subdivide it, and they could put two more houses on it. Same thing with 603, so I guess that's...
Two more are just two, period.
No, they, he, yeah, so they can do two.
There we go. Because there's one today, yeah.
Yeah, and then let me verify the size of the one. But yeah, so, so yeah, so by right, they can do four houses. It was just the rezoning would allow them to get to five, like they stated.
Okay. And then Ms. Reynolds spoke about the Talon subdivision. Was there any rezoning of that property?
There was not.
There was no rezoning.
There was. The planning commission initially denied the plat, which the courts redirected the planning commission kindly because it met our criteria, and the plat was approved. There was a concern about cutting a new road in and some site distance on College Street. The traffic study addressed that site distance was adequate for the speeds and timing of the road, so that, that was approved. Also remind you, the zoning has been this way since 1984. I can't go back and find why this was the dividing line, but the creek would be a normal reason why it shifted. And lot sizes were set in groupings at the time. The 14 means 14,000 square foot minimum, so they took groupings of housing, looked at the smallest lot in the area in that NC grouping, made that the bottom number. And so things must have shifted over the creek to larger lot sizes, but I can't, you know, from 1984, tell you anything other than our, as we've seen citywide, it's likely that the creek was the dividing line here.
There's also another lot on South College, and I don't know the address. I know the family that used to live there, the French family. And it looks like the house has been torn down. I don't believe they have sought rezoning for that lot, and do we know what they're going to do with that lot? Has there been any plans presented?
Yeah, I'd need an address to...
Yeah, we need the address. Yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
So the only thing under consideration is zoning one NC-20 lot at 615 South College to, from NC-20 to NC-14.
Let me ask one more on the watershed issues. What agencies typically weigh in on watershed or floodplain issues?
Eric, do you want to, or you want to, Scott, or whomever, Brandy? You can, Scott can.
I'll take it then. Okay. Anything related to the stream and mitigation, streams and wetlands would be the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. FEMA would address anything related to the floodplain and any mitigation that they would have to do related to that.
ADM.
FEMA...
Not ADM.
No, ADM would not have...
No, ADM deals with when you're exposing X amount of dirt, we do put some stormwater permitting through ADM, but based on these sizes here, it depends.
Yeah, both, both of these...
May not trigger.
Both of these would require, you know, some, one federal department or another's input.
I will say that we see this all the time, though, citywide, not just here, meaning it's very common for people to deal with all these agencies.
I watched with great interest the planning permission deliberation on this proposal, and I thought they, I thought they handled it appropriately, given the kind of cavalcade of problems associated with this proposal, the driveway issue, the floodplain. And for my taste, and I think the spirit of the neighborhood there, the approach into the city, I remember it vividly when I first moved here in 1998, the aesthetics of that neighborhood. I just don't see that, that density and those structures clustered together represent the characteristic of the neighborhood at all. And so for that reason, I will not be supporting this proposal.
Anyone else? I believe South College is special, and the city council has not stimulated density by changing zoning on South College. I don't think that is, I don't believe that is the right thing for us to do. I do believe the builder would put a nice product there, but I believe stimulating density on South College would, would not be productive for our future, and I don't agree with that. I do want those residents to understand that by right, they can build four houses on those two lots, and there's not anything this body can do about stopping that unless there's some development issues that come up that challenge their ability to build. So I want to make that clear for everybody who believes we have the power to stop it because we don't have the power to stop a redevelopment of two houses on each of those lots. Am I correct by saying that?
It would be a subdivision matter, and the subdivision regulations as state law clearly indicates planning commissions purely reviewing whether or not they meet the criteria set forth in the subdivision regulations, nothing more and nothing less. And planning commission is required to approve if they meet criteria. So as long as the developer's able to meet the criteria in the subdivision regulations, the city council also does not adopt subdivision regulations, planning commission does.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I want to add on this, so both lots, so 603 that is currently in, NC-14 is currently 29,000 square feet, so that's a double. And then 615 that is currently NC-20 is 48,000 square feet, and so that's double NC-20. And so to the point that the planning commission does have sole jurisdiction over subdivisions and preliminary plats, this would not meet the threshold to make it to planning commission. This would all be handled internally. And so it would only be an admin plat, and there'd be four lots, and so that would all be handled internally. And we would have those internal discussions about whether they meet, like whether they've got their approval from FEMA and all of that. So that was the only thing I want to add, that this would be an admin plat. This would not even go back to planning commission.
By the number of lots, it's, yeah, it meets that criteria.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Yes, Kelly?
I'm just a little bit confused. You're talking about two lots, but all the maps and everything that we have in our packet show a single lot.
So there's an adjacent lot on the other side of the creek that is NC-14, if you're looking at the map, and the mayor pro tem may be appointing there. They have control of another lot that's on the other side of the creek, so that's why you're getting a discussion of four houses permitted by right.
Correct. So the rezoning is about 615, which is currently zoned NC-20.
And that's where this, this home that's on our maps is...
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's the proxy maps. But the development in totality would be 603 and 615. 603 is just currently NC-14 and does not need to be rezoned.
16, the other one is already NC-14.
That's correct.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Mormon, did you have a question?
Yes, I think so. This only goes down to, NC only goes down to about Woodfield, is that correct?
In this vicinity, it might sunny slope and others on down toward Cloverleaf. It extends further.
On that side of the street, yeah.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, NC carries throughout the Cloverleaf neighborhood.
Okay. Well, just to compare it to North College, we don't have that issue in the immediate vicinity, that issue of clustered homes, because it's protected by the historical preservation guidelines.
It, well, let me...
Part of it.
Well, what is protected right in the thick of the historic district just north of Bragg Avenue and Mitchum? One challenge is, the Historic Preservation Commission has no jurisdiction over subdividing. They have jurisdiction over new structures being built and so on, and/or replacement of structures, but nothing would keep, keep somebody from subdividing. A lot of that zone, Neighborhood Conservation 8, which is 8,000 square foot minimums, and so it's a different nuance there.
Well, I don't, I hope that doesn't happen. That's not what I would like to see north of town nor south of town. I just wanted to draw a distinction between the way they look. I think that flavor of Auburn going north, going south is sacred. It's not sacrosanct, but it is, it is important to us. So I just remind the citizens and the council about the personality of Auburn, and that is part of it.
Anyone else? Okay. Lindsey with the roll call?
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Witten?
No.
Adams?
No.
O'Blunt?
No.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Friswall?
No, ma'am.
Foreman?
No, ma'am.
Anders?
No.
Right, mayor, that motion fails. Are you ready for resolutions?
Please.
All right. Item 10A1 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential use of multi-unit development for eight units to be located at the terminus of Giddens Street in the medium-density residential district zoning district. This project is known as the Boulevard Phase 8. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its April 10th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council. See, no one will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential use of multi-unit development for 28 units to be located at 1027 East Glen Avenue in the corridor redevelopment east zoning district. This project is known as Grand Junction and was previously known as East Glen Mixed Use. The original conditional use approval has expired. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its April 10th meeting, and a public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening.
Brian Stone with B.C. Stone Homes, 687 North Dean. This is the second time I've been before you guys on this. Unfortunately, this project got away from me about a year ago, and then it found its way back to me, so we're ready to move forward with it. Like we said, our conditional use expired. Just wanted to kind of give some, shed some light on the scope of the project. The project's very similar in scope to what I presented to you a year, year and a half ago. The players are just a little different. We still have the 28 townhomes in the back, which is what the conditional use is really about. Nothing's changed there. The two commercial buildings in the front, unfortunately, we're not going to have a brewery. I know a lot of people will be disappointed in that, but we decided to move forward without that. But the east building will be a two-story building. We, B.C. Stone Homes is going to occupy, we're going to occupy the top story, so we're going to be there permanently. There will be a tenant space below us in the east building. We're yet to secure a tenant there. And the west building and the patio area will be Carbella's Restaurant, so they've agreed to come to town, and they're going to do their sixth location here in Auburn, Alabama. So we're ready to get started as soon as we get approved. We already have plans pending DRT, so I'm open to any questions or concerns like anybody may have.
Sure. Once we close the public hearing, we'll, we need to ask you questions. Brian, we'll call you back up. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes a tax abatement for 2A USA Incorporated located at 2410 West Tech Lane for the purchase of new equipment. The company plans to invest approximately $2.72 million and anticipates hiring five, or sorry, four new employees.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? We're always grateful for our industry's expanding in our community, thankful that they see Auburn as a fruitful place to do business, and they want to grow their business here, so grateful for that. Thank you to our industrial development team for their hard work. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 10C is sent to the vacation of a sewer and public drainage and utility easement located at 212 West Magnolia Avenue, and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to GAA L. Owner LLC. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council about this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the city council. Close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? I will be abstaining. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The last agenda item we have this evening is item 10D. It authorizes text amendments and future land use map changes to Comp Plan 2030 as part of a five-year update. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this update at its November 14th meeting. The city council initially postponed consideration of this request at its December 17th meeting and postponed it to January 21st. We had a little ice and snow storm that caused us to then move that to January 23rd. During that meeting, councilperson Parsons made a motion for approval, and mayor pro tem Witten seconded the motion. A public hearing was opened and closed that evening. After the public hearing, councilperson Parsons moved to amend the item to remove growth changes number five and number six. Mayor pro tem Witten seconded the motion, and all members voted aye. Then councilperson Dawson moved to postpone the item to this evening's meeting. The council is now considering the approval of the Comp Plan 2030 update as amended by the removal of growth changes five and six. A public hearing is recommended, but not required.
Move for approval.
You're already good. It's on the table, you're good.
I would like to request that a public hearing be opened.
Okay. Council, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council regarding this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to speak to the city council. See, no one will close the public hearing. Any further comments or amendments?
I'd like to make a motion to, a move to amend growth change number seven, leave all parcels proposed to be interstate commercial as office park, commercial, and industrial support. The timing is not right, as there are some existing residences in the vicinity of the parcels proposed to be changed to interstate, commercial, and can be reevaluated in the future. And I'd like to thank Megan and her staff for helping me compare these.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Any comments or questions from the council regarding this motion? Do we take a voice vote on that or roll call?
Council's ready to vote, that's fine. You have some information in front of you that councilman Dawson asked that I share. I can also put maps up on the screen if you need me to run through those.
Will be the council's wishes. We have a motion second on this, so we'll be voting just on this amendment.
This is an amendment, another amendment.
Okay.
I would suggest to put it on the screen for the public's consumption.
Okay. That'd be fine.
I'll just walk you through real quickly. What you see before you is growth change number seven. And so I'm going to walk you through what we have as existing, and then what is proposed as part of the comp plan and what the change Councilman Dawson is proposing. So the box to the left that it just highlighted with a black border, you've got first highlighted in yellow that it just brought up, it's the purple kind of diagonal hatching area. There's two pieces that were proposed. They're currently office park, commercial, and industrial. And there's two other pieces now highlighted in yellow that are currently interstate, commercial. What was proposed as part of the comp plan is moving to your right was that the purple crosshatch areas that, well, sorry, there are areas that were interstate, commercial, now be flipped to office park, commercial, and industrial, and then some that were just the opposite, these two be flipped to interstate, commercial. This last slide will make it a lot clearer. What Councilman Dawson is proposing is with this amendment that the parcels outlined in yellow will be changed from interstate, commercial, to office park, commercial, and industrial support as originally proposed. However, these two parcels will not be changed to interstate, commercial. So it's taking those two parcels, one up. There are three residences on the parcel to the north that is outlined in yellow above Corporate Parkway, and then there's others along the interstate interchange there. And they will keep their current land use, which is absolutely positively office park, commercial, and industrial support. I'll remind you, this has zero to do with zoning. Zoning comes later. This is just a future land use plan.
They'll remain rural.
They will, as part of zoning, the two parcels that you're looking at here, one is rural, the southern one, and the northern one, three of those parcels are rural, and one is CDE zoned right now. And then a lot of the others are rural. But again, zoning's not entering into the picture. But there's been some confusion among some citizens in the area. You received some emails today that you're not considering a zoning change tonight. And I think Councilman Dawson had sent some emails to his constituents explaining.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any questions from this council? Okay. I'll ask again.
You're just voting on the amendment? You've got a motion second, you've had discussion, and you're just voting on the amendment?
Okay, all right. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that amendment carries forward. Mr. Dawson.
Also, move to amend growth change number three to leave the areas proposed to be residential as rural.
Second.
Second. So we got a motion second. Chief, you still got some?
Yeah, the reason why I'm recommending this is because we are still not ready from an infrastructure standpoint to open up west Auburn for dense residential development. I have repeatedly mentioned my concerns about infrastructure capacity, particularly regard to wire road in Alabama Highway 14. I'd like for people to show interest, but hopefully we can do something in the near future to get a plan for them.
Chief, we've heard you loud and clear.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Would you like me to go over these as well?
Please, if you would.
So this one involves a few more land use designations. You've got rural, you see on the left side of the screen, you've got limited residential in the green stripe being medium density residential and industrial. So just starting with where we stand, the black box outlined on the left side of the screen, you can see outlined in red, all of that is currently rural. Everything being considered as rural. When you get to the right side of your screen, the first highlighted parcel with the blue around it, that was at a property owner's request to be medium density residential. Then you've got this box below that is now in the green stripes to be limited residential, which would be one acre parcels. And just to remind me, medium density residential is what density?
Six, it's six only units an acre.
Okay. And then the very last parcel slated to go from rural to industrial. So what's being requested with this amendment is the parcel would be changed from rural to industrial as proposed, and all others would remain rural as shown on the map to the left as existing.
All right, any questions from the council? Any thoughts, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right. Do we have any further amendments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a text change amendment, please.
Okay.
Have a handout for, but everybody, we're turning to page 41 of 48. Under the Public Safety section.
Did you say 41?
Forty-one of 48, yes, please.
Okay.
Okay. The, let's see, one, two, three. Fourth paragraph on that page starts off with a sentence that says, "As the population grows, there will be a need to maintain the diversity of the police department." That tends to imply that diversity versus merit would be a consideration for hiring. So I would just simply like to delete that first sentence. The rest of it refers to Hispanic population and the need for multilingual, certainly multilingual as a skill regardless of the ethnicity or whatever of an applicant, and that's absolutely appropriate. I applaud the department and the division both for having Spanish speakers on staff. But I believe that first sentence takes us down a path that's not necessarily based on merit for hiring. So I would recommend deleting that first sentence.
Is that, that would be a motion?
That is my motion, yes.
Second. All right. We got a motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
If it refers to this sentence, can we receive some explanation?
Sure, that sentence has been in there since this plan was adopted. That's not proposed to change. The only thing proposed to change is the word department. I have corresponded with Councilman Griswold about this previously. This term diversity is diverse and broad in nature. That is gender, that is skill sets, that is many things. It is not referring to race. It is a broad term of diversity in people who work in the police department in a very broad definition. But it is certainly up to the council if you want to change that.
I read that to just, I understood the intent in, well, let me just say, my understanding of that sentence was exactly as you provided just now. Diversity meaning a combination of a variety of skill sets, people in general, walks of life. It, I know that that word particularly these days has some kind of trigger to it, but I don't see its application in this particular sentence. And I would love to think that our police department continues to have a variety of people, skill sets, and age ranges, and genders, and so forth. I don't know that there's any suggestion that that sentence implies employment eligibility rather than simply describing a rich and varied personnel.
I would, I would agree with you, Bob. And I didn't take this, reading this as, it simply apply to race, but I think a broader application.
Oh, I'm, I'm not just race. I just wanted to be focused on skill sets and merit, necessarily the diversity of the applicant's pool or the workforce.
I'll remind you, this has nothing to do with our hiring guides, practices, or otherwise. This is part of a comprehensive plan, just stating the big picture.
Yeah. People are comfortable with it, so be it.
Any other comments?
Well, I will, must say, I listened to Bob. I think he makes a valid point, so I could, I understand. Changed my mind.
We do have a motion a second, so we'll go ahead and vote on this. All in favor of making this change, please say aye.
Wait a minute. What change you talking about? Talking about department?
Striking the sentence, I think.
Striking the word diversity. Please say aye. All opposed? Say nay.
Could you, could you state the vote again, please?
Yeah. All in favor of making this change where we strike the word diversity and add the word merit, correct, Mr. Griswold?
No, it's the sentence.
Striking the entire sentence.
Striking the entire sentence, all right. All in favor of striking this entire sentence? Please say aye. All right, too. All opposed? Please say nay.
Nay.
All right, next one. Okay. Anything else? Okay. At this point in time, Megan, do we need to do a voice vote on the?
So I'll just remind you, you're on the main motion, and what you have done is you've amended it at the previous meeting to remove growth changes five and six. You've amended per councilperson Dawson's request, something having to do with growth change seven and growth change three. So those are inclusive now of what you're considering in a final motion. So you are ready, and it is absolutely fine to do a voice vote unless we can't discern where you are.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of approving these updates to the comp plan 2040?
As amended.
As amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the motion carries forward.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open citizens' open forum. It's your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We'd ask that you come forward and share your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak to the council. We ask that you address your comments to the council. Who'll be first? Yes, ma'am. You're good. The clock isn't going to start until you get right here, so not a problem.
My name is Beverly Aycock, and I live at 1960 Lee Road 137. I work for People Engaged in Recovery, PIER. We are a nonprofit organization of people in long-term recovery. I can stand here all day and tell you my story, but we all know what the story of somebody who's been down the road of addiction is. I'm not here today just to address the board, but also the community as a whole. Anybody trying to find help from substance use disorder faces many, many barriers, especially in this community. Three years ago, the only way I could get to treatment was by getting arrested and begging a judge to let me go. Today, I stand before you, working as an advocate for those that are trying to find their pathway. I wanted to let the community and the council know that we are here to help in any way when it comes to substance use disorder in our community, bring awareness, and also to educate the community, because it is not a moral failing, but it is a mental health issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forth, and all the best. Who'll be next?
Robert Wilkins, 261 Dedson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today was Tax Day. I just got through about two hours before I came here, and then I did my speech, so it'll be kind of different. I want to thank the STR5 because I had to pay less taxes. That includes Taylor, and Griswold, and Parsons, Dawson, and of course, the mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Allow me to, we, the STR members, STR members ecstatically are glad that ordinance 3288 was paved, has paved the way for the downtown hotels, like the hotel being built on Gay Street. The owner only has six hotels or seven in the area. Of course, another six or seven in the areas of Columbus and some other areas. So I feel sorry for them with the Anders Hotel also by the AJ Capital at 5.3 billion and under the flagship of Hilton. The city manager says she's a stickler for vehicle purchases. When are we going to get a breakout of 870 vehicles and equipment? Because I believe data is important, just like data should have been important with a short-term rental. There was no data, there's no data on the vehicles. The reason Griswold continuously, is the only one that votes for it, is because you eight, don't, eight members do not have any data. You can't make any decisions. Like even with the little bobcat that was approved. It was approved because you were told that it was, they were renting one a fair amount of time, but you know, nothing happened with it. So I think you have to prove that you need certain things. If you're going to make a decision, don't vote, and if not, just let the city manager continue. Also, the city council dealing with raises. I believe you should need raises. I did two polls in the next door. Eighteen weeks ago, 16% said you should get 12,000 a year. 15% of the people said 18,000. 20% said 24,000 a year. You need more money. But 50% said stay at 7,200. But two weeks ago, that changed. 33% said 12,000 to 18,000 a year. 31%, which I believe, said full-time council members. We need a full-town council members because we have a city that's growing very fast, and we have a two-system, a management system and a council, and y'all are in charge, and I don't believe you have enough time to do those things. And that's all. Appreciate it.
Who'll be next?
Okay, Miss Wick. Deborah Beal, 802 Toluoma Drive. And today, I wanted to show you, this is what the city has approved as the new library logo, and the T-shirts are available today. I got one of the first ones. And so hopefully you'll see kids and adults around town with all this advertisement and free shirts. And if you, you still have two weeks to get stuff logged in for this two thousand minutes of reading, and they'll start another one, I believe, in May. But I wanted to show you what the shirt was looking like, and they worked hard at getting it approved and going through all of that. I also want to celebrate that tomorrow, the pickleball courts open up, at least the first batch of them, and a whole bunch of people plan on being out. I don't know how many, a whole bunch is, but a bunch of people will be down there at 7:00 in the morning. I can't play yet, but, and I'm not going to go because I will want to. But I wanted us to celebrate that. And I also got ahold of one of the summer program flyers for Parks and Rec, and saw that they have stuff on the pickleball courts and Lake Wilmore out there on that. I also was excited to learn that they have approved the use of Renew Active and Silver Sneakers, both as providing memberships that are free to the Auburn public that are members of that. And I wanted to give a little explanation to you in case you weren't familiar with it. The insurance companies and Medicare in general has decided that it's really good for, we owe people to keep active, and it costs them less in the long run if they pay for us to get out and do things. And rec centers are a really good place for us to do things like that. And they've developed a thing called Silver Sneakers that a lot of groups use. And now there's Renew Active, which is used by all of us that are on Medicare, that are former city employees, sheriffs, police officers, fire department, university, school, any public employees, which Auburn has an awful lot of people in it. So all of those who qualify can get memberships to all of Lake Wilmore and the other facilities for zero cost to us. Now, that doesn't mean the city doesn't get money. So if you get people start complaining to you, well, how come these people get it for free? That they have to fill out paperwork at Parks and Rec to file with the insurance companies who then pay for it. So I wanted you to have that information in case you start hearing from people complaining about it. But let's celebrate pickleball.
Thank you. Let's do it. All right, who'll be next? Okay. We'll close this part of our meeting. Citizens' open forum. Anyone on the council have anything they'd like to add? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
Some move.